The time is now 6:01. We will now call this special public meeting in the Board of Trustees of Umbel School District to order. Moving to our first item of business will be closed session. At this point in time, if during the course of the meeting covered by this notice, the Board should determine that a closed session of the Board should be held or is required in relation to any item, including this notice, and such closed session is authorized by Section 551.001 of the Texas Government Code, will be held by the Board at that date. A closed session of the Board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice of this meeting. Should the Board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter concerned or considered in such closed session, then such final action, final decision, or final vote will be made upon reconvening of this public meeting in open session. Closed session of the Board will now be held. Again, the time is 6:02. The time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Moving to our first item of business, questions and comments from patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matters. Do we have any? We do not have any, so we'll move to our action items. Let's see, item four, action items from closed session. Ms. Toomey, if you could read those back in the form of a motion for me?
I move that the Board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? 5:00.
I move that the Board adopt the resolution for the reimbursement of expenses to Deputy Superintendent Dr. Roger Brown as specified in this item.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, I will take item four, C, real quick, which is nomination of a candidate for the TASB Board of Directors, Region Four, Position B seat. It is my recommendation that we do not put forth a candidate for this Board. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor? 5:00. All right. So now we'll move into our information items. The reason we're all here, and that is our budget workshop and our employee compensation plan highlights. So, Mr. Scarfo, am I going to kick it over to you?
Yes, so, yes, we would like to share the large, kind of medium-sized ESER list that we sent out to all of you and talk about that a little bit. ESER requires us to have a public input process. Last night, Jamie Bryson and the District Decision Making Committee met, and we received some of that input. And we've also worked with some student groups to receive input from them. And so, once we have all of that input plus a final recommendation, we will absolutely bring... I think it worked.
Can you hear? Yeah, now you can.
Sure.
Yeah, now you can hear when I... Okay.
It's a little loud, though. You might want to turn me down.
Okay, so for my final official act as a Board President, we're going to let technology just ruin the entire meeting here, and especially talking about money. So, sort of like yesterday, we show up for the Teacher of the Year Luncheon, and it's a monsoon.
Yeah, it sure was.
So, we entered the year with chaos. We're going to exit the year with chaos.
We've had a fair amount of chaos every year.
So far. So, are you ready? Okay, so without...
Wait till as soon as...
You're ready?
Are you back? Okay.
Okay, so where... Is everybody ready? Do we need to revisit that TASB thing again?
Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Beatty and go ahead.
All right, there we go. Dr. Fagan, back to you, or Billy, or whoever's taking this next part. Hey, I've lost total control. Go ahead.
Well, we want to thank the Board for working with us through this budget process, and it will include some ESER spending. Once we have that input, we will bring back a recommendation to you all. And tonight, we'll just preview some ideas that we have and answer any questions that you have about those options. So, I'd like to introduce Mr. Billy Beatty, who is our Chief Financial Officer, and he's going to take you back through the budget process slides that we've seen, most of them before, to just review the overall spending plan, revenues, expenditures, and even leaving a little bit of money available for next year.
And I promise there's technology dollars in this budget recommendation. So, I'm very excited to be able to present this. Not that I wasn't excited the previous presentations, but as we're getting closer to the end, it started, you know, the process starts as a very fuzzy target that we're kind of starting to focus in on. And now, we're at that point where we are seeing what we need to do, and I think we're all very excited that what this budget does and what it has. So, right into the recommendation, we'll start with the compensation side. And we've talked a little bit about this in the past, but last year, this year was tough, and everyone did everything this year at the same rate of pay as they did the prior year. And so, this budget recommendation includes a 3% on average raise for all staff. We also are recommending rolling the $1,400 House Bill III stipend into base pay. And as we've stated before, the benefit of that is to make that TRS eligible, so that is counting towards retirement calculations. We also don't want to forget about everybody else, the non-House Bill III folks, administration, and hourly folks, that we are including in the $1,000 stipend that we were doing previously, continuing that this year, but not rolling that into salaries, just keeping that as a stipend this year.
Mr. Beatty, on the 1,400 stipend as it relates to the 3% average raise, I know we're going to talk about staff salaries and stuff here in a minute, but... So, there's no confusion. Does the 1,400 go towards the base, and then the 3% is added on top of that, or is a 3% added, and then the 1,400?
It's the 1,400 first, and then the 3%. Yeah.
Okay. All right, just wanted to make sure.
And it took a lot of battling for me to get that. We agreed with that.
All right, thank you.
So, Rick's team has also reviewed our stipend schedule, and one of the recommendations is to build content specialty stipends, which will replace some of our retention stipends. And another benefit to that process is that those stipends will become TRS eligible, whereas the retention stipends were not. So, better benefit to the employees. One of the other items is looking at ways to increase efficiency with travel and making it less complicated, so rolling in travel stipends for intra-district travel into base pay as well to make that a little bit more of an efficient, streamlined, easy process. And also to not forget about our custodians, transportation staff, and child nutrition staff, and raising the minimum hourly rate to $11.50 to provide that very competitive starting salary for those staff members, because we know they have a lot of options out there in the market, and we want to make sure that they know Umbel is the best place for them. And also preparing for virtual instruction, the... We're creating in this budget a virtual instruction stipend to be prepared for that this coming year. And also, all the positions for in how... Current positions that have changed drastically this year, and we expect those positions to continue to be changed for forever, putting those positions through a review process and making updates to those positions.
All right, one more quick question. The virtual instruction stipends, is that for teachers that are doing both in-person and virtual? Is that what that's for?
We're still working through that because of the legislative process, which appears to be prohibiting teachers from having both in-person and virtual students in the same section. So, if that is the case, the idea behind it was teachers who have all in-person planned for all in-person, and teachers who have all virtual planned for all virtual, but teachers who have both actually have to sort of plan twice.
That's why I was asking the question.
And so, we were working our way through what would be the criteria, how many sections, how many students, all these kind of things. But now, we're sort of on hold while we wait a bit for the legislative piece.
Okay, thank you.
And one more piece of information on that is that we're recommending utilizing one-time dollars for that, so that we can allow this year to happen and learn from this year, and then further build on that for following years.
Well, and the bill, as it currently sits, actually has a sunset provision for two years from September 1. So, September 1 of 2023, because they have a commission that will be best practices after that. So, anything that would go beyond that would be premature.
Ms. Toomey, can I ask you a question? Because I made a note about that. It seems to me like that HB 1468, substitute in Senate Finance Committee, it seems to be at odds with then the HB 3643 that's going to set up this commission to study...
No, they actually work hand in hand. So, what... So, the 1468 is going to provide kind of that stopgap for the next two years to allow people to create a program. And then, in that two-year period, while the commission is meeting, determining best practices, and then in the next legislative session, they would make whatever changes would be necessary. So, the one concern that's been expressed by some people in public testimony has been, well, what if we create these great programs, and then the commission recommends something that's kind of counter to what we're doing, then we've got to recreate the, you know? But that is a risk.
And Dr. Fagan, do we... And the amounts in there, do you think that's enough, the 300 and the 500, or...
Well, that's where we wanted to start, just for the inaugural year of it. But again, I mean, we can... Once we see what the actual possibilities are of what a teacher, you know, can choose to do, because I was hopeful that maybe they would say, I know that there were some teachers that didn't want to be forced to teach both, but I thought it'd be nice if they left it a little bit open, so that if a teacher wanted to teach both in the same, you know, if you have an engineering teacher, and they say, I don't mind having two virtual students in that section, that they would have that option, and then we would obviously compensate them differently. But it doesn't look like that is going to be allowed. So, we're really just kind of waiting to see what is allowed, and then we want to make sure that we're fair in the differentiation. Because if I'm a full-time in-person teacher, and you're a full-time, not, you're a full-time virtual teacher, well, I have a lot of duty stuff that you may not have. I have in-person classroom management, but you might have more students than I have. So, we have to kind of weigh all of that out and determine what is fair going forward. So, we wanted to start kind of in a, you know, a reasonable spot.
I'll say too, on that point, if the bill, again, in its current form, which it could change between now and then, because we still might have a conference committee and all that, the language does say that the teacher cannot be forced. So, that might actually be an interesting question for, you know, interpretation as to what that means. If someone wants to, if you have that teacher that says, I want to, because I've got this really specialty situation.
So, not only thinking about compensation, but the employee benefits side of things, because you don't want to lose sight of benefits, because if you provide a salary increase and then turn around and just have to, you know, give that raise to higher premiums on your benefits, we wanted to make sure that we looked at that and addressed that. So, and in a year of COVID, I personally am really happy to recommend no rate increase on the Umbel ISD Alternative Health Plan. We don't know what's going to happen with TRS active care, but as far as our new Umbel ISD Alternative Health Plan, we're recommending no premium changes there. And also looking for ways to enhance that plan. So, one thing we've learned through COVID is that employees, everyone really, is going through a lot, work-life stress, anxiety, depression. And we want to make sure that we are providing that support and addressing that need. So, we're recommending adding a mental health professional to the Umbel ISD Health and Wellness Clinics to provide that support. And then also not recommending any increase to any of the other voluntary benefit offerings. So, that 3% increase that we talked about earlier, employees are feeling the full effect of that and not having to turn around and give more money in their benefit premiums. And then also, this is not so much an employee benefit, but on the employer's side, as TRS makes changes, and this year is one of those where the employer is required to contribute more to TRS, this budget allows for us to adhere to those new guidelines. So, we are growing. Everyone feels that and knows that, and we are one of the few districts out there that grew this year. There are a lot of districts in a totally different position as we are, and this budget, they're not as excited as we are right now with the budget process, because there is a lot of uncertainty in trying to plan for the students that they may have lost. So, we gain students, and we are preparing and planning to gain another 1,000 students. We are estimating about 150 new staff members to support that growth. And some of those staff members are for our new elementary school, Autumn Creek Elementary, beginning to staff Middle School 10 to, so that that campus can start preparing to open the following year. And then also, being prepared for virtual instruction, so some positions available as virtual instruction changes. And we know the students who are interested in virtual instruction right now, but we know that that could change, so preparing for that. Also, 1,000 students, we could see more than 1,000 students. So, holding a number of positions set aside, so that if we do experience higher-than-projected growth, that we're able to support those students. And then we've had facility changes this year as well. So, the North Transportation Center, New Lakeland, and Autumn Creek will require us to have some changes to our transportation needs, and we need to provide new routes and staff to support those new transportation needs. And also, Director of Elementary Education, which will be an extension of the assistant soup over Elementary Division, and continue to deliver that personalized instruction and support for the elementary campuses and students. We're also making sure to address innovation and personalized education. This budget provides for new special education teachers and paras to support our growth in, for students with special education needs. Also, provide support for dyslexia. And then also, give all of the middle school campuses a CTE teacher for 6th grade, so that students can learn what, to see what interests them the most, so that they can build on that interest and get a little head start in furthering down that path. Also, previously, we have added 504 facilitators at the secondary level, and that was very successful. And in this budget, we're recommending to add 504 facilitators at the elementary level. And that has been very successful, supported the counselors at the campus. And then also, just virtual education in general, just making sure that we are prepared for what virtual instruction will be next year. We have talked a lot about safety this year, and we don't want to stop doing the things that we did this year with COVID. So, making sure that we're addressing custodial equipment to maintain our cleaning protocols. Also, to make sure that we are providing maintenance on the systems that protect our buildings. And I'm excited about that onsite shutdown and the bipolar ionization. The onsite shutdown, again, is when a gas leak, or a fire, or something is happening outside the building, the campus has the ability to shut down the air handlers. And right now, we're trying to get more air inside the buildings to provide a healthy environment to adhere to COVID protocols. But in that situation where a gas leak's happening, we want to shut down that as fast as possible to keep the healthy air inside and the dangerous air out. Also, we are driving a lot of our vehicles to where they can't be driven anymore and pass inspections. So, we have evaluated that, and it looks like we'll need to add a number of vehicles to ensure the safety of our staff. This budget also aligns resources to goals. So, it includes funding for fine arts instrument rotation. I've been holding my breath, crossing my fingers. I don't know if it's raining right now, but I don't want to say anything, but we need to continue to protect our facilities with insurance, and this budget continues that coverage for us, so that we don't have to waste those dollars on new furniture, or putting back a building after we experience a flood or another disaster, that we can be made whole by our insurance policy and keep those dollars directed to what we think is, what is most important. We also are definitely supporting and maintaining our technology. There's lots of initiatives in this budget to keep us supporting our investment in technology. And another item in this, in the budget, is that we are allowing for a new and improved internal audit software. So, Sean's team can have a better system to complete her campus and department audits. So, that brings us to the numbers. And the Transportation Center has saved us money, so we're going to be able to take that out of our existing budget and reapply that to other needs. So, it will, you know, highlight a couple of the items. To staff for 1,000 new students is roughly $5.5 million. The 3% on average raise is about $10 million. And we're able, and kind of why we are so excited about this budget, is that we did a lot of the preparation last year, so we didn't know what was happening. And we left a lot of budget capacity on the table to be prepared for a worst-case scenario. So, we now are in a position with $14 million of carryforward capacity from last year to utilize that this year in this recommendation. So, all in all, about $22 million in new, or recurring budget capacity. And after this recommendation, we're left with about $1.1 million to give us a head start for the next year and be able to support opening a new middle school and whatever initiatives we have for next budget cycle. We're also trying to utilize one-time funds when necessary. So, we are recommending to utilize our assigned fund balance. And remember that this is not... We have two categories of fund balance. There's unassigned and assigned. And the unassigned is what we set aside to make sure that we don't have any cash flow issues, and we are able to pay salaries and pay the bills and operate as usual. $75 million assigned fund balances is separate from that category, and this would be a good opportunity to continue that retention stipend for the non-House Bill III employees. And also, since we don't want to get too committed to the virtual instruction stipend as we're learning this year, another one-time money opportunity to pay for that initiative. So, all in all, that will bring our assigned fund balance around $71 million. So, that is our budget. So, now we can talk a little bit about ESER III. And Dr. Fagan mentioned that there are a lot of requirements around ESER III. This is the largest federal grant ever. So, you know, we need to make sure we're checking every box, making sure we're doing everything right, following all the guidance and rules, because, you know, these dollars will most likely be audited, and we want to make sure that we don't cause any disruption in the future, that we're getting this right on the front end. So, a couple of those major requirements are to get stakeholder input. So, as we mentioned, the District Decision Making Committee met last night, and they took a look at some of these ideas. And then also, we need to make sure that we address learning loss with at least 20% of these dollars. So, we have about $35 million allocated to us, and so about $7 million at least needs to be devoted to addressing learning loss. So, some of the ballpark ideas and numbers that we have right now, that we're working through and evaluating, and looking at eligibility requirements and things like that, are listed here. $35 million sounds like a lot of money, but we don't feel like we'd have any issue figuring out how to spend that money. So, from this alone, this... There's lots of great ideas.
That hurts, Mr. Scarfo.
I'm just teasing. You know that.
And so, this is 47 in $47 million right here in this list that we're currently reviewing. And some of those major ideas, you can see the high-dollar amounts, potentially a COVID impact extraordinary effort to retention-type stipend. We'll have to come up with an acronym if that one, you know, makes it through the final plan. But to help recognize and support staff for what they went through this current year through changing protocols and quarantines and virtual, learning the virtual instruction side of things, and all of that added beyond their normal job duties work that they completed.
Do we think we'll still need the, it's almost about $600,000, well, almost $600,000 for the testing and the tracing?
The dollars that are on here are reimbursing us for the money we already spent.
Oh, for the...
So, we have already spent that money on those things.
Okay, so, not for additional...
Right.
To use that money up, okay.
But I wanted to just mention, so, a lot of these items are reimbursements to the district. And I just want to sort of emphasize Billy's point about the COVID impact extraordinary effort retention stipend, which I think Rick named. And in any case, this was a very uncertain year. We were spending millions of dollars on PPE and on Chromebooks, and, I mean, just one thing after another, and we were using fund balance. We were moving through yet another emergency. And so, we knew our staff were going way above and beyond. I mean, they showed up when other schools were not even open. Some schools are still not open in the country, but they showed up in August, and they did what was best for our students all year long. They were changing dynamics, just so much stuff going on. But the district was enduring a lot of... But the district was enduring a lot of turbulence also, particularly with the costs of COVID. So now that we have this SRR III option available to us, we wanted to see what the opportunities were for us to pay the staff for the extraordinary work they did this past year. And believe that, you know, if supported by our community input process and by supported with the board, that we could provide a pretty, a nice stipend, retention stipend, to really thank them for planning virtually and in-person at the same time, and constantly changing dynamics, and principals who had to do contact tracing almost every day, and infinite amounts of emails sent out about that. Additional duties for custodians and bus drivers. So just everyone had to chip in. It was a very challenging year. So I'm just very happy that our legal department, our HR department, Billy's folks could come together and make all these pieces and parts work, so this is a possibility.
Yep. And there's a lot of items in there that we want to do no matter what, and they're already in our budget recommendation. But again, there's some of those items that could be SRR, you know, be SRR-eligible, and so we include them on the list as well for review.
And I know that this is, this is the initial kind of brainstorming list. So I see that we've got the virtual studios at the ISC and Umbel High School, but then the Umbel High School renovations down below that talks about virtual studio. Do we by any chance have a little bit of overlap there, so we could...
So the initial, so there's two different things here. The virtual studios at ISC and HHS are sort of piloting preliminary designs and equipment that we believe are exactly what our teachers have said they want and need to be able to do this well. And then as Umbel High School, ISC would become a permanent site for campuses in that arena that would like to come, teachers who want to come over and recorded lesson, learn how to use the space, whatever. The Umbel High School equipment would be moved into its permanent space after, so the equipment wouldn't be lost in that. The North Belt is an entire wing, yes, that would be completely dedicated to virtual learning at the elementary level, and have spaces where teachers would be able to see all of their students and interact with them, record incredible lessons. And then one of the things that is part of this conversation is, we would actually be building a technological container for all of those great units and lessons that would be searchable. So even if you weren't a virtual student, but you wanted to see that really great lesson on whatever, you could access that also as an in-person student who is at home, trying to remember what, you know, the teacher said, how to do stoichiometry at night with your mom who's like, "I have no idea what you're talking about." So just a great opportunity for us to then, you know, take the very best of those lessons and those units and make them available to other teaching staff, parents, and students.
And that's a good point about keeping them a little bit separate, because there's a different level of requirements on the construction side. So the equipment itself is, you know, where you're kind of seeing that broken out. And then the actual building, Umbel High School and that renovation, if we add, you know, if we add to construction to build a new wing, then that's where that comes into play. But keeping them separate, because there are a little bit different requirements on how you can get construction approved.
I'm sorry, I'm still not following the two, the Umbel High School, the two...
So we want to pilot the equipment design in an existing space at Umbel High School?
So that, all right, so that line up there is equipment, not building out of...
It's equipment.
Okay, you caught me up.
Okay, great.
And then that, if there's no more questions on that, then that brings us to our final, and hopefully y'all haven't gotten tired of hearing me present, but our last meeting will be June 15th for budget hearing and adoption.
What do you estimate our budget number to be?
Total revenues, about $450 million.
Okay. Dr. Fagan?
I think the next item is Rick Gardner with just a brief overview again of our compensation proposal in a little more depth than Billy provided, just answering any other questions that you have about that. I believe Ms. Dixon did request to look at the, we always look at the gap, right, that develops over time in the way that the system is, so I know that Rick wanted to cover that also.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Dr. Fagan, and members of the audience. It's my pleasure to present to you the 21, 22 compensation overview, which should be on your screens as we speak now. For our previous, from our previous budget workshops and finance committee meetings, where I presented to you all some various models, we have landed thus far in navigating through other needs and obligations of the district while balancing our financial resources is the compensation plan that's in front of you now. This plan provides a 4.1 structure adjustment. When we talk about the step pay system, which will bring our starting salary with zero-year teachers from $56,000 to $59,000, and provides an average 5.4 general increase to base salaries. This includes what we just talked about earlier, where we're rolling in the $1,400 stipend and plus a 3% step increase on top of that. So for example, years one through six will be the $1,400 plus $1,750, which would total in those groups $3,150 that they would be, that would be going towards base salary. Year seven through 14 is $1,400 plus $1,800 totaling $3,200 towards base salary. And years 15 through 21, $1,400 plus $1,850 equaling $3,250. And then lastly, years 22 through 26 plus $1,400, and anywhere from $2,450 to $3,235 totaling $3,850 to $4,635. Now, the reason why 22 to 26 is so much larger is that we're trying to place these years in the market at a minimum of 98%. So on the right-hand side of the screen, if we wouldn't make that adjustment, you could see where our market position would be in years 22 through 26, anywhere from 97%, as low as 96%. Now, for the midpoint system, it entails a 1% structure adjustment to all scales that is moving, again, the minimum midpoint entry up 1%. And then applying a 3% general increase off that new midpoint. There are a few exceptions to where the structure adjustment is greater, such as the administrative instruction pay scale, which you can see there. That scale will have a 3% structure adjustment, given the aggressiveness of the step pay system that feeds the employees that get promoted into that administrative pay scale. For example, teacher who gets promoted to be central office specialist, or might be assistant principal. So we want to keep, we want to keep that scale up in comparison to the step pay system, because that's where we get into this compression situation if one is more aggressive than the other. And again, this only applies to the administrative instructional pay scale. Estimated cost, as I mentioned, as you see here at the bottom, is $10.6 million. And this model two gets our teacher entry pay at a projection within the market at six. Our entry pay would be ranked sixth, at an estimated 2% above the market. In order to close the gap for this particular model, given, based on a possible 2% market movement, it would cost us an additional $900,000 on top of the $10.6 million. Now, this slide here just shows you basically the detailed cost that gets us to the $10.6 million, and the breakout of those employee groups, and how much each of those areas costs the district when we're doing a 3% increase. Slide four basically shows you where our step scale is today with regards to the reality of our entry pay, is that we are seventh in comparison to the surrounding ISDs. With the general increase and the $1,400, the compensation plan would put us at six in our ranking with regards to our entry rate of pay. That is based on an estimate 2% market movement. Now, I hope I'm wrong, that there isn't a 2% market movement. I hope it's less, because if it is, then we will raise higher in the market of our entry pay compared to our surrounding ISDs. And this slide just simply shows you the estimated close the gap that I like to provide to the board. The left side shows you that before we made adjustments to raise the steps below 98%, it would cost us $1.1 million to close that gap in addition, so that we're at 100% of the average line. That average line represents the other 14 districts in comparison to where we are projected-wise.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes?
Have we taken a look at the gap when we calculate in the benefits that we offer with the, with our local health program? And so, obviously, because we're not having, this year, we're not, we're not going to increase premiums, so that is a benefit to our employees, obviously, because TRS raises every year. So it seems like we might, actually, that gap might be even smaller.
It could be. Now, this does not project benefits. This is strictly about base pay and where we land amongst our other peers. But, I mean, that could be also something that we could look at.
I just think that would be interesting, that'd be, especially once we see where everybody else moves, I think that'd be an interesting comparison, because I actually think that that would probably put us even higher up in the market than sixth.
And that's definitely a possibility, but the other thing you'd think about is they have other benefits too, and then also all of the different stipends, some pay more for yearbook, for instance, or whatever. So it's, we would not need a lot of information to truly compare, is my thought. But I think, I mean, you're right, as far as the benefits are concerned, but we would have to look at a lot of different variables, I believe.
And that could work to our advantage as well, in comparison to attracting and retaining staff. With regards to this particular slide, again, we spent an additional $225,000 towards that gap. That would be, you know, us moving to at least a minimum of 98% of the market between years 22 through 26. And as you can see, this is where the $900,000 remains as to trying to close that gap. And again, I hope I'm wrong with regards to 2% structure adjustment, because if I am, then that gap is going to shrink even more, will become closer to that average line if the market moves at 1%. So in closing, this plan continues to help Umbel ISD in a good, to keep in a good position and striking distance to compete with our competition and our ability to continue to attract and retain qualified candidates, and retain and reward our existing employees in striving to keep the family whole. This is some of the compensation highlights that I wanted to share with you this evening for you to consider moving forward. In closing, I would just like to thank in advance the board, Dr. Fagan, Billy and his team, and my own HR team for making this happen, if approved. And I'm open to any questions that y'all might have at this time.
Rick, could you go back two slides? I've got one quick question on the, no, one more, I'm sorry. No, another, there you go, right there. So on the, the 22 to 26-plus-year experience folks, it's got $1,400 plus $2,450 to $3,235. What is the differentiator there? Because the amount of raise is, it shows down here at the bottom, $3,235, which is a 5% increase, average increase. But I'm a little confused on the different numbers over here on the left.
I'm sorry, Mr. Stent, which line?
The, okay, so on the left side, step pay system, the 22 to 26-plus-year.
Yes.
So I'm looking at, the $1,400 is self-explanatory, the $2,450, but it says $2,450 to $2,3235.
Right. So...
And that carries over down here, but, but then you have equals $3,850 to $4,635. So I'm trying to figure out the differentiators here.
So he's, he's got 1400, they all get 1,400, and then the 22-year gets $2,450, and the 23-year gets $2,630, $2,850, so you see it go down?
Oh, I got you, okay, all right. I got it. Now, I got it. Yeah, I just, I wasn't looking at the whole group, I was just looking at the bottom line. Thank you, sorry about me being stupid.
Nope, it's all good.
It's all good, that's right.
Anyone else have questions regarding the salary schedule? Ms. Morrison?
My only question, Rick, is, okay, on the 25-years, you have 5.3 the average percentage, and then when you move up to 26, it's only 5.0. Can you explain that to me?
Sure. So that really basically boils down to, on a personal level, that's what the average would be in that particular group.
Average in that group?
Correct, correct. Now, again, we could beef that up to where it would be showing as such, but again, that's the 26-plus group, and so we got 26 all the way to 40, right? And so it's kind of the average of those that's playing out there.
Mr. Scarfo? No? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Gardner, appreciate you.
Thank you for your time.
So close to 60, Rick. So close. I was looking at that, the compaction, though, creates a problem there, yeah. Because we'd have to move all those.
Well, all right, Mr. Scarfo, would you like to wrap us up?
I, there is no other questions. I appreciate all the efforts been made thus far, and appreciate you guys all digging into this. I think we're pretty close to the goal line at this point. And of course, you know, the SRR decisions, that's not really part of the budget process, two separate things. And, but I think we have a good budget moving forward here for this upcoming year. And again, it's great to see a surplus budget. It's not as big as it's been, but there's a lot of things that we are doing into this next school year that I think is going to go a long way to keeping us on that trajectory. So I think we've got a good product, and appreciate all the effort that you guys have put in over, because it's been months, because I know you've been working with us in the Finance Committee over this, this process, and you guys have been doing a lot of work outside of us, and appreciate all that, and obviously, it's coming to fruition now. So thank you again, Dr. Fagan, appreciate all the help.
Thank you. There's just one other thing I wanted to mention, is that this SRR process is a reimbursement process, so a little bit like the FEMA experience. And so when the board does decide what we would like to do, we would probably be spending out of fund balance and then reimbursement from the state. I think it's at the state level now, but it's federal money. So in any case, I just wanted to put that on your radar, because we won't be getting a check for $35 million that we'll just write out of. It's the opposite of that. So again, anytime those fund balance bills come up, I just want to mention that here's one more example, where during an emergency, we need fund balance available so that we can, you know, purchase the $10 million worth of stipends and then get ourselves reimbursed.
All right, perfect. Thank you very much for that. We do have a board meeting coming up on June the 8th. Board, budget adoption is June the 15th. Yep. Is there anything, any items for consideration for future board business that we need to look at for the next board meeting? Not seeing any. It is 7:48. We are adjourned.